Hello, I'm Pastor Dave and this is our third session of the Acts Bible Study. And in this section, we're looking at Acts chapters eight, nine, and 10. Now, in these three chapters, we do have a familiar passage, but really this section focuses on the conversion of Paul. And this really does start out in chapter eight, verse one, which finishes really chapter seven. This is Paul, "And Paul approved of his execution," speaking of the execution of Stephen. And this is something that's interesting, and this is something that stuck in my head, not in any of the commentaries I've read on this so far, where I can understand a Pharisee agreeing with the execution of someone for blasphemy. But as other commentators noted, that was a lynch mob, and yet here Paul is agreeing with it, which kind of shows a degree of lawlessness. But as this continues, we see the church's response to the death of Stephen, which is, "They were, they respectfully buried him, they grieved for him." And as says much about the church itself, that they were individuals of great courage, they were good people, they respected others. And then opposed to that, we have Saul, where he had no problem dragging people off to prison, just for being Christian. And as, and he kind of went hard against the church. And as Acts continues in four and five, we see that really this is how things, the church started spreading. The Jewish people at this point weren't just in Judea and Galilee and maybe Samaria. I mean, they were throughout the Roman Empire. And here we have Philip, who is not the disciple Philip, this is one of the seven deacons, basically, a contempt, one of the seven like Stephen, who was preaching in Samaria. And what was astonishing here is that Samaritans were the people the Jews didn't want to deal with. There's some history there that goes beyond what we're looking at. But a good Jew would not preach to the Samaritans. They didn't deal with the Samaritans. That's why the parable of the good Samaritan is such a bigger deal to them than we make it out to be. And we're seeing this is the shift of the church, because if you go back to Acts one, verse eight, you see that they were to spread from Jerusalem to Samaria, Jerusalem to Judea, to Samaria, and to the whole world. This is being fulfilled in the actions here in verses four through eight, where Philip is doing this work. And there's so much here about how big this is. Because, I mean, the Samaritans and that's, were not people Jews wanted to be like. This is why this is important, because it is a shift. And this does go back to ancient history. Because basically, these were kind of, this goes back to siding with the Assyrians. They were part of the northern kingdom, the southern kingdom couldn't stand the northern kingdom. And people were moved into the region by the Assyrians and created a mixed people who were, had a Jewish and Assyrian background. And that's why the Jews didn't like them. And that's why Jesus called a critic, a Samaritan, in John, chapter eight, verse 48, kind of as a curse. And they're used repeatedly in the gospel. But Philip is breaking out from the Jewish base of the church. And this feeds into why people like Paul had a problem with the church, because now suddenly it's going further into Samaria, to beyond people who were Jewish. And this comes up repeatedly throughout the scripture, whether a convert had to become Jewish first before they could become Christian. We'll get into that later. But while we're still in Assyria, we get about to the point about Simon in verse 14 through 25. And part of this gets into the idea of magic. And really, when we think about magic, we're not talking about illusions, we're not talking about the sleight of hand of modern magic. This is more of the type we're, we as Christians are not comfortable with, where the idea that magic is best defined as an attempt to control divine powers through the application of certain techniques or esoteric formulas. That comes from Bishop William Willemann specifically. And so basically, in the ancient world, magic was seen as basically important because it was controlling divine functions. And Simon was practicing sorcery, even, even though claiming to basically be a follower of God, he was engaging in magic before Philip arrived. And this is one of those signs of a false prophet. Because a true prophet would give all praise to God, a false prophet tends to feed their own ego. And sorcerers at this time would almost have kind of like a cult following, almost like a, the modern equivalent might be like a cult of personality for celebrities. And part of the struggle with this was the fact that Philip was making the point that only Jesus is worthy of praise, not individuals. Hence why they were also pray, baptized in the name of Jesus, not in the name of the teacher. And this becomes an issue because Simon is seeing what's happening. He's seeing the work of the Holy Spirit, he's seeing people be healed, and he wants in on it. Hence why Simon offers money for having hands laid on him. And that just shows a misunderstanding of God's grace, the fact that it's paid for. But also it shows that Christ didn't have, or Simon didn't have Christ's salvation within him. Because the Holy Spirit is also not at the beck and call of people. So when we look at this passage, and especially when we start getting into Peter's rebuke of him in verses 20 and 21, we see that even though Simon was believed and was baptized, he had an insecure faith, he didn't understand the Holy Spirit, thought they could still be bought, hence the rebuke. And this begs a question, and we could get, go down that rabbit hole of the theology behind the sacraments with this, of why did Philip baptize Simon without the spirit within him? And leads to the questions of what is necessary for baptism, what happens in baptism? But regardless, we also get an important lesson in here about what happens when someone isn't doing what they're supposed to do as a Christian, because Simon is called to repentance. And to do so before something happens. And the call to repentance isn't because, not just because he didn't like what he did, but because he was in danger because of the corrupted nature of his own heart and not fully understanding. So this rebuke wasn't meant to be mean, it was meant to be a gift of repent and be forgiven, not change what you're doing because we don't like this. And we could play on this a little further, when we continue to look at Simon. Of, we can compare him back to last week with Ananias and Saphira. Ananias and Saphira committed a sin and were killed immediately. Simon is not, even though he's still sinning. So what's the difference? Now, when I was doing the research on this, Tony Meredith pointed out that with Ananias and Saphira, their sin was premeditated. They had made a promise, they deliberately chose not to do so and to lie about it, knowing full well that's not what they should do. Meanwhile, Simon was just ignorant. He didn't fully understand what was going on. And this leads on to also a different topic altogether, and this would be the legacy of this passage. Simon lives on in kind of ecclesiastical law circles, because there's a specific word, um, simony. S-I-M-O-N-Y. It actually is a practice that is condemned, but has happened, and that's the practice of buying or selling ecclesiastical offices. If you ever hear medieval Catholic theology will have a lot of this, and it still pops up now and again, but that dates back to Acts eight, and why it is a condemned practice. But at this point, after leaving Samaria, the apostles head back to Jerusalem. And we see what they had learned. They learned to preach the gospel, how to proclaim the gospel in various situations, and praise God for the work of salvation among the nations. And I would point out, this is important for us, as we live out that Acts one, eight. We see that it started in Jerusalem, then Judea, and now it's spreading out further. Each way it's kind of growing upon itself, learning from the experiences as they prepare to make the next step. Almost each place is a stepping stone. We also see this happen as we finish out chapter eight, because we have the Philip and the Ethiopian eunuch. And looking at this, there's some details to go into. One of the things about this instance is that Philip didn't do this on a whim. He didn't do it just because he wanted to do it either. Philip was directed by an angel, basically directed by God to reach out to this eunuch. And now we're also out of Judea, we're in Gaza. Now, there were two Gazas. The first Gaza was destroyed in 93 B.C. And that's referred to typically as Old Gaza or Desert Gaza. The second Gaza was built in 53 B.C. And this road by Gaza, this was one of those ancient super highways. And it was used by commerce, used for travel. Running across the Ethiopian, oh, that road wouldn't be that uncommon. Now with this, you have to unpack the word Ethiopian as well. Ethiopian in the Greco-Roman world didn't just mean someone from Ethiopia. It could just refer to the person's skin color as being, I guess, black. Um, the word Candace that is in here, Candace, Queen of the Ethiopians, that's not necessarily a specific person. Um, that was the title for queen in Ethiopia. So that's who this person is tied to, tied to the ruler of Ethiopia. May have been Ethiopian, may have come from further south in Africa, brought up as a slave into the court, much like, we want to make a comparison, much like Joseph serving in, as a slave, serving in the Egyptian court and rising. This is something that was actually very common in the ancient world, and actually into modern times in the Ottoman Empire. Now, why the eunuch was there, um, it's possible that he was a proselyte, that he had converted to Judaism, and we could go back and kind of see the connections going back to the time of Solomon. But also, what's interesting here is that he, even if he was a proselyte and converted to Judaism, he could never fully experience fellowship in Egypt. We see this in Deuteronomy 23, verse one, but kind of prohibits them from being in the people. And it's one of the things, like he could go to the temple, basically going into the court of the Gentiles, but like he could visit there, but he could never actually go in the temple even following Jesus. And what he's looking at here is Isaiah 53, and we kind of get a witness sharing instruction at this point. Because the eunuch was reading Isaiah 53, and this was the starting point. And this is where Philip got in with him, specifically looking at, and then also looking at Isaiah 56, three through eight. But Isaiah 53 is a passage that has been debated time and time and time again, and what it means. And this really is what Philip uses to reach out and win over a new convert for Christ. And what's interesting with this is Philip baptized this eunuch. And this again expands that circle, that Acts one, eight circle of Jerusalem, Judea, Samaria, the whole world. First off, this is the one that would be from throughout the whole world, a Jewish proselyte, possibly. But also a person who was prohibited because of being a eunuch from being fully included within Judaism. But here, he is baptized and brought into the church. And we also see the reaction he has to being brought in. Typically, when someone comes to faith, it's not always broken, but some, as a broken person, but they typically leave rejoicing, they gained something from this. Now, at this point, we turn to the conversion of Paul in chapter nine, and verses one through nine is, was the sermon. So I would encourage you to look back at the sermon for the service this week. But as you look at this, Saul is going up to Damascus because he heard that the disciples were up there, and he gets a letter from the church, or basically a letter from the priests in the Sanhedrin to basically go and get them. Now, this is post-Stevan. So basically, Saul had heard that some of the Christians had escaped to Damascus, and he wanted to get them from Damascus, about 140 mile trip, and bring them back to Jerusalem. And along with him, he had the Sanhedrin's guards, or their police force, which is interesting, and it says a lot about Paul, because the Sanhedrin guards were not people that a Pharisee would ever associate with. That's why we kind of see that he he wasn't traveling with them. Some of his travel here, he was anxious because of his desire to stamp out the early church. But also, he didn't want to be in the presence of these guards. He was kind of trying to walk away from them. And also, what's interesting when we look at this journey, to go from Jerusalem up to Damascus, he had to travel through Galilee. So not only was murder on his mind, and probably thinking about what happened with Stephen, he was going through the home territory of Jesus and many disciples. So there's something happening there. Now, one of the things that's interesting, and William Barclay points this out, is when that road from Jerusalem to Damascus, you have to descend from Mount Hermon to go on the Plain of Damascus. And if you ever spent time in the mountains, and for me, it was when I was stationed in Colorado, you get some interesting weather with mountains, and this is no exception. And there, there's an atmospheric phenomenon that exists, that the cool mountain air would meet with the dry air of the plain, and that would lead to electrical storms. So, and I did mention this because later we see that the guards didn't hear Jesus talk to them and everything else. It's possible this storm happened, and it's through the storm that Jesus appeared to Paul, so, and the others couldn't see him. And we see in specifically his call, where we have a blinding light, and then he's summoned by name. And when we look at being summoned as Saul, Saul, which we see in verse four, this harkens back to the calling of Abraham and Jacob and Moses, where it said, Abraham, Abraham, Jacob, Jacob, Moses, Moses. It's kind of a biblical basis of the call there. But it's through this call, he discovers that he is an error, that he is opposing God. And the voice kind of goes from accusing him of what he did, reminding him of all that he had done, to giving him a commission, saying, "This is what you will do now." And as was mentioned in the sermon, he has been humbled at this point, he can't see those guards that he saw as beneath him, and people to whom not to associate with. Now, he's relying on them to get him into Damascus. And basically, he's told what to do at this point, what he planned to do, he can no longer do. Now, as the story continues in verse 10, we get another Ananias. And what happens with Ananias, we get another echoing of Old Testament calls with the, "Here I am", which goes back to point to the Old Testament that are in the study guide. And Ananias in this passage is kind of one of those unsung heroes, because when you think about it, he knew who Saul was. He was there to basically arrest people like Ananias and bring them back to Jerusalem, likely leading to their death. And he is told, "Go to him and basically welcome him as a brother." That was not a pleasant task, it was literally going to a person who wanted you dead and saying, "Welcome." And Ananias does this. He welcomes him in Christian love as a brother, he offers him forgiveness. So you kind of have that scene of former enemies coming together. And bringing the former enemy into the church. And there are so many lessons that we get from this, beyond the fact that salvation is God's, is by God's amazing grace. All conversions involve a lifelong, a life-changing encounter with Christ. All conversions involve a surrender to Jesus Christ. And while one may not have the same blinding experience that Paul has, there is a metaphor from going from the darkness to the light. But also that it is God who saves, not sincerity. Conversion does involve receiving the spirit. That God can save the worst of sinners. That you almost become a new person. We see this with the name change, because you receive a new purpose to life. And the conversion involves receiving a new family. It's not just a change in mission. And when we look at what happens with Saul, soon to be Paul, after his conversion, we see him live out what he does. Because starting in verse 19, I mean, he immediately bore witness in Damascus to what Christ had done. Like he basically wants to run to the synagogues as someone who had been sent by the Sanhedrin to arrest and persecute the church, proclaiming the mission of the church and who Jesus Christ was. And also, he started on a mission immediately. He went, left Damascus and went on a mission to Arabia. So now we're seeing that mission change further from the Jerusalem, to Judea, to Samaria, to the whole world. But this also raises the question of apostleship and what that looks like. And this becomes very, this issue still exists within the church today of who is an apostle. And the best definition, and this is the traditional definition of who, of an apostle. Because the 12, and like the 12 original apostles, they were witnesses to the resurrection. Of course, there were more than just those 12 who were witnesses to the resurrection. Paul wasn't there on Easter, he wasn't there at Pentecost, he wasn't there at the ascension. But yet, he had an experience with the risen Christ. And this is where that definition of the apostle gets expanded, because he did encounter the resurrected Lord post-ascension. But he had to wait for validation. And we forget that, and this is where we can get in trouble if we don't, for example, beyond the apostleship thing, we take the idea of God wants us to do this. As someone comes and says, "God wants me to do this", there is a need to have it validated by other believers, saying, "Yes, we agree that God wants you to do this." Pastors typically have this when exploring their call and having to retell the call story, and having people affirm that, yes, God has called this person into this ministry. There's a need of validation unless, basically beyond those initial apostles, there's a need of validation for Paul's apostleship, just as there's a need of validation of calls in our lives in the world. But with this, we also see that we have to keep in mind that Jesus never promised Paul an easy ministry. But it did completely change the history of the church and the direction of the church. Now, as we look at what happened, as we continue through chapter nine, we see that Paul had lived, and this is also according to Galatians 1:18, he lived for roughly three years in Damascus. And to the point, and caused so much headaches that the Jews wanted to get rid of him, and they had to stick Saul in a basket and send him over the church, the city walls to let him out. And it kind of sets the tone for what he was going to do. He was going to courageously preach the gospel, even if it meant his threats of arrest and imprisonment, and even death. But ultimately, he arrives back in Jerusalem. And here's where the validation comes into play. They were skeptical and of right should be. I mean, this is the man who held the coat of the people who stoned Stephen, and he approved it. He had actively been opposing the church. And now they wanted to, basically, they wanted to make sure he was what he said he was, and not just, and make sure they knew that he wasn't up to anything funny. And when we look at this, this is when Barnabas comes in. And Barnabas testifies on his behalf, which is entirely appropriate, because Barnabas, the name Vardemus, literally means son of encouragement. He offers Christian charity, looking at the best in Paul. He testified on behalf of what had happened, saying, "This is what happened in Samaria, this is what we saw, this is what we experienced", and pointing out that Jesus never held a person's own history against them. But at this point, the spotlight also does shift from Paul to Peter. We have this great thing happening there, or happening with Paul. The church is now spreading, and now we get the shift to Peter, where now this is the first time since him meeting up with Philip in Samaria that he's brought back in. And we get a miraculous an event happening. And this really does solidify what apostleship also is. Now, what's important when we look at this miracle, both the healing of Arinus and the raising of Dorcas. We're seeing the power of Christ, because it's not, again, it's not Peter's healing, it's Christ's healing. So we see Christ's power over disease as, and then Arinus was a, was a paralytic. So we see Christ's power over disease as, and Arinus was a, was a paralytic. When we look at the raising of Dorcas. Other name was Tabitha, meaning gazelle. Dorcas is Greek. And what's interesting in here is in verse thirty-six, in our definition, it actually says disciple. When you go into the Greek, the version they use is the female or the feminine form of the word disciple. Meaning, which opens up discipleship, here's a named disciple, who, another named disciple who is a woman. And really through this, we're starting to see things spread more in the breakdown of the Jewish norms into what will be the new church. Because we also have the idea of bringing up where Peter is at. Where like, we're seeing the word saint and that's Hagios in Greek, and really it's a word that means wholly indifferent or different. And it's saying that Israel was different. Once Israel was different, nor now Christianity is different. We're showing the, how important the faith is and we're seeing the change where at the last verse of the chapter, verse forty-three, Peter is staying with Simon a tanner. The job of tanning is a disgusting job, it's not pleasant. It was not a Jewish job. It was kind of one of those things that a Jew would not become a tanner. Or no one who took it very seriously would become a tanner. And no good Jew would stay with a tanner. And so we're seeing another breakdown. But now we, we continue again with Peter. And we get another hallmark of the church, and this is really where we're seeing the change solidify. This is another well-known passage, the basically Cornelius and Peter. And this is really where the church will change. Okay, Cornelius was a Roman centurion who was stationed in Caesarea, which was the capital of Judea under the Romans. Centurions were not reckless. They weren't overtly bold, they were prudent, they were steady, they were supposed to be measured, because they held responsibility. And this goes into that he was probably part of the legion stationed there, realistically commanding about a hundred men. And saying that he feared God, that is important because Gentiles oftentimes were weary of having so many gods. There were gods for everything. And when they were exposed to the Jewish faith and the idea of having only one God, that became attractive to them. And someone like Cornelius who said, who feared God with all his household, gave generously an alms to the people and prayed continually to God. He would be one who would attend a synagogue, even though he wasn't Jewish by birth. And he was charitable. And this is important to know, just for our own edification, that centurions were paid five times the amount of an ordinary soldier. He had a degree of wealth. And one of the great examples of this that we can look at is the idea that we can compare him to Nicodemus, as someone else who took it seriously, who did what was right and then came to Christ. And this is where the Holy Spirit gets in to this situation. Because God is basically playing religious matchmaker. Cornelius is given a vision by God to meet with Peter. Cornelius wasn't a follower of Christ, but was directed to Peter to meet with him. Peter, as we'll find out, will have a vision from God. So basically, both Cornelius and Peter are actually passive in this narrative. And instead, it's completely God at work. Now, to prepare Peter for this event, he had to learn a lesson. And this is where we get this great vision. And I brought up about Peter staying with a tanner. So this, there's a little bit of work already happening there. Cause tanning's an unclean job, no good Jew would take it or stay with a tanner. But here's Peter, this is where he's staying. And he has the vision of the sheet coming down and seeing the food that he wasn't allowed to eat. This goes to Leviticus chapter eleven on the very strict laws. And for the most part, at this point, the only thing that stood between a Jewish person's full assimilation would have been the dietary laws. Because for a Jew, this was a matter of life and death. It wasn't just a preference thing. And we get the threefold, um, the threefold statement, rise, Peter, kill and eat. And then we told a second time, what God has made clean, do not, do not call common. And it happened three times. And this is done basically so you couldn't miss the message. And this prepared Peter for meeting Cornelius, starting in verse seventeen. Because as this was done, the messengers from Cornelius arrived and saying that Cornelius wants to meet with you. Peter goes, he doesn't know why he's going, he's just knows God wants him to go. So we're seeing not a conversion from a Jew to Christian here, or from a Gentile to a Jew. We're seeing a conversion of an apostle. And basically to be prepared to welcome Gentiles into the fold and that the good news is not just for the Jewish people. So from Joppa where Peter was all the way to Caesarea, this is about a two-day journey. So Peter also has about two days to come to terms with this. And through this passage, we're seeing both the Jewish attitude towards Gentiles and also much about Cornelius himself, because Cornelius prevents Peter from coming into his house because he knows Jews should not interact with Gentiles, let alone have them be a guest in their home. Or be a guest in a Gentile's home. But Peter breaks down the barrier by entering in. At which point, we're seeing both Cornelius and Peter demonstrate their humility. Cause Cornelius bows to the fisherman Peter, even though a centurion would not bow to a someone beneath him. And the fisherman looks at the centurion saying, we are both men created by God. And in Cornelius, you see an eagerness to hear what has been done. He understands God well enough, he wants this done. So at this point, starting in verse thirty-four through forty-three, he's preaching the good news and we start to see some, we see the standard structure of witnessing that we find here. And that is that you proclaim, you offer the scriptural proof and you call the people to repentance. And in this, we're getting a kind of a summary of what needs to be done. Like this is the standard model. And we see that Pete, as Peter is giving the message that Jesus was sent by God to equip, and equipped by God with the Spirit. Jesus exercised the ministry of healing. He was taken, arrested and crucified, he rose again. And that the Christian teacher and preacher is a witness to the resurrection. And the response is the forgiveness, repentance and the forgiveness of sins. And in this, we see that Peter is saying that God doesn't have a preference for any one group of, of people. And instead welcomes people of all nations, that Christ is Lord of all. The full ministry of Jesus, the resurrection, and that everything was done in accordance with the scripture. This is kind of what Peter is doing here. And this is the same model for us today. And as chapter ten kind of closes out, what we're basically getting here, starting in verse forty-four, is the Gentile Pentecost. Where in the day of Pentecost, it primarily fell on the apostles and the Jews who were there. Here, the Spirit is coming down, it's poured out, this really does echo Acts two seventeen and eighteen. And the Holy Spirit is being poured out upon the Gentiles. And the Jewish Christians are convinced by the sermon that Gentiles are converted and baptized, they're accepted into the church. And we're seeing where we see that the Gentiles are now also the children of Abraham. And if there's any doubt, which there would be, with the Holy Spirit being poured out upon the Gentiles, there is no doubt that God is the God of all people, not just one select group. Well, that covers our three chapters for this week. Next week, well, next week we're doing chapters eleven through fourteen and getting into the work of the church. So at this time, down in the description section, there should be a link for the study guide. I invite you to make sure you read chapters eight through ten before you get together to engage further. But also feel free to review the sermon and remember that there are opportunities available, both with the group in PA Furnace, um, two groups on State College, as well as the Zoom group. And I would encourage you to participate in that if you're possible. But until next time, I'm Pastor Dave. And I hope you work through that study guide this week and take a good, solid lesson from Acts.